Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Like to stand for its need to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we have an add-on tonight on the agenda and it's going to be Mr. Wylund from the Recreation Department. So you'll go first, sir. Or Ryan, or whoever, or Kayla. This is a team effort.
Good evening. We just wanted to come by this evening and talk a little bit about an award that the Township has received regarding our Bayfront, Fork River Bayfront Park. The park was completed last summer. We opened it to a wonderful concert with the B Street Band. We had a, you know, a few hundred people in attendance and it was a great evening, shared by all. And the New Jersey State Recreation and Park Association each year hosts a conference where recreation professionals across the state get together and we do continuing education, learn best practices and share ideas across, across each of the municipalities and counties and state officials that attend. But they also host an awards section where they go out and they, and they review different designs, all different types of awards throughout the state, whether it's for programming events, facility design. And we were lucky enough to win an Excellence in Design Award for Fork River Beach Bayfront Park. We have our display board out in front here and it's been prominently displayed at our municipal building over the last few weeks. And it's something we're very proud of. On a Wednes- or Tuesday evening, March 6th, we did receive that award and we have it here. But we just wanted to share that with the community. And if you haven't had a chance to be down, go down to Bayfront Park just yet, you really should. It's a, it's an absolute beautiful facility and it's something that we're all very proud of. We're very happy that this state decided to award us that Excellence in Design, so.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may. I had the privilege of attending that with Veronica and it was, every point, anybody, any, I guess any community that built a park last year or the year before, whatever, whatever the timeframe was, submitted something. And there was only, what, ten, twelve parks that got awards?
Uh, five.
Only five?
Only five got awards. There was numerous admissions.
Yeah.
Probably close to four.
Exactly. So this is something that's, this, this is just a crowning achievement for our Parks Department because we are noted for our parks. And this is just the creme de la creme and this was Casey's final send-off for us, so. And it was good, Jim and Ryan represented us well down there and it was just a good time and people came up to us and were, were very appreciative or, and liked how the park looked. It's just, it's just spectacular. I just can't imagine, any woman or lady who wants to get married outside doesn't use that park. I just can't imagine why you wouldn't use that park. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can I get a picture of something?
What's that?
We have the award here.
Yeah.
If I could do a photo.
Okay, why don't we do this? I want everybody, all the committee down, we're all involved.
I've already been in a photo, I don't need to be. I'm good. I'm sorry, everyone's.
Come on, Veronica.
No, I'm all right. I'm all right.
How are we going to see, how are we going to see the picture? Standing by? Awards?
I can hold on the end, you only have to wait.
I guess you made it to his event.
Yeah. There's something going on right now. She didn't want to stay very long. Whatever.
What's that?
Yes, right? All right. Ryan, do it.
What does he have to worry about? It's still getting myself area. Right. I'd like to try that sometimes.
Me too. I'd like to know.
Number one proclamation for Library Week.
We have our local library director here, Nancy Boyko, to accept this tonight. And I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with the people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses and schools. Whereas libraries are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation and in the world. Whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technology. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing steam, steam programming, maker spaces and access training for new technologies. And whereas libraries and pi- libraries and pioneers supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of their race, ethnicity, creative ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries leading, libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities' open minds and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nicholas Juliana, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee proclaim April 4th through the 14th, 2018 to be National Library Week. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. It is because of you our libraries and librarians. Libraries lead. Do you want to begin and present? That's it. Ms. Boyko?
I look forward to this every year. I'm going to put it up in the library. I think I received one from everybody on the council. I've been here so long. So I'd just like to say that during National Library Week, I never do it, I don't like that, back to people, but, so I'll just do it through sixty. I'd just like to remind everybody of our motto of the library about connecting people, building community, community and transforming lives. We do this every day at all of branches in the Ocean County Library System. And in this case in particular, we're an integral part of this community and we are so grateful for the support of, of the Township and everybody in this town. Our mayor, excuse me, I have to do a little plug for our mayor because he comes every month, I know, right?
Oh, look at that.
He comes every month, if you know this, he's at the library the second Tuesday of every month meeting with citizens in an informal setting. And this is a tradition we've had for a long time and we really appreciate it. And our citizens that take advantage of that appreciate it as well. And also we have a lot of other great things in the community. English conversation classes for people who are learning English on Wednesdays. We have art, music and movement programs for our patrons with special challenges, adults and children. We even have movie days for adults with special challenges as well. Our patrons can charge their phones, use their Wi- use our Wi-Fi, send a fax, use a public computer, download books, magazines, stream movies. Did you know you can stream movies now? It's great. We also have yoga for seniors twice a month on the first and third Tuesdays. We have free movies shown twice a month as well. Every day there's a children's program at the library. Maybe many of you have probably gone up with your kids coming to see Ms. Corinne, right? Many of you know her. We have teen programs weekly and an opportunity for our teens to get involved with the library by volunteering and earning, earning community service hours. And this week we have a contest going on for National Library Week, so please, please, please come in and vote for our display. We have an awesome display with an article, library theme, little Gilligan's Island thing going on there. So come and vote because it's a contest with all the branches. And just so you know, a few things coming up, a lot of you are pet owners here. We have part- we also partner with a lot of people in the community, so it's not just the library standalone, but what, what, what do we do with others? Lenoka Ops, a monthly program for pet owners, so please come and find out more information about treating your pets, home decorating, fads and common injuries for pets, you want to be careful of that. Recycle Right, we're going to be working with the Municipal Recycling Coordinator for a program this month, okay? So we'll be doing that. And last week we had an awesome program, A Tribute to Women in Jazz, but on April 30th we have a Carol King tribute concert.
Oh, wow.
I know, isn't that cool? So for my generation. And she really packs the house, so please, I think our registration opens on Monday. Since I heard Veronica say something. I'm back to you.
Ethel Agar.
Carol King's Ethel Agar.
Not herself.
It's a tribute.
No, no, tribute. She's, it's really looking wonderful.
Just come to town.
And those are just a few things. So you see, we, there's so much, and plus databases, right? You can touch on the databases, which you can just do a lot of things for the comfort of your own home. We have over a hundred databases with information from school research to travels, to financial, to learning languages, to taking classes. So you see, we really are a community center. It's not just about books, although we do love our books. We have a little bit of everything there. And we welcome everybody, no matter who you are. We're the place to come for information, for fun, for culture and for entertainment. So we're a universe, really, and we're right in your own backyard and we're looking a part of it, so thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Mayor. You ready?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
Two. Lacy United Methodist Church Summer Lunch Program.
Pastor Applegate? Or whoever's going to speak.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, committee. Team, I thank you for the time to come for you. We just wanted to bring up our fifth annual free summer lunch program that we have for Lacy's children. It has taken all of the churches in town to come together and, as well as many of the businesses, restaurants, to feed up to 140 children every summer. And so we're very excited about that and I'm looking for even more support from the community if they could help us. There's no necessarily budget in each of the churches, but it's just everybody working hard to try to make sure that the children have a, a well-balanced meal every day during the summer.
Good evening.
I'm Ellen Loney. I'm from the Lacy United Methodist Church. Myself and Gail Matuschow, we are the coordinators of this program. We go out to the community to, we've been to all the restaurants in town and a lot of the businesses and they have made generous donations. Of course, we're looking for additional generous donations because there is no federal funding. Last year we serviced 100, about 145 children, 47 families. We only, not only service the child that is in school that's receiving free lunch or reduced lunch, we service the entire family. So we, if there's two other siblings that are not in school age, they also get lunch delivered. We have volunteers five days a week from various churches, from our own church, from different organizations, that go out and bring these lunches to the children. We have no contact with them, we leave the lunches in coolers. And it's a wonderful program. You see their little faces in the window sometimes waiting for you and that makes it all worthwhile. So any of a pretty that can volunteer their time during the course of the summer, Monday through Friday, we're at the church at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Good evening. Shannon Hoffman, Village Lutheran Church. We were very pleased to be asked by Pastor Linda to be a part of this wonderful program with the congregation. We've had tremendous amounts of donations. We do at least two weeks during the course of the summer and it is extremely rewarding. What we've also tried to do now is coordinate with all the other churches when they do a Vacation Bible School program. And some of us, Village and United Methodist, do an evening program, so the children are offered dinner as well as the luncheon. And all these services are provided through the congregations, which is just a rewarding experience as well. So we're very pleased to be a part of it. We thank Pastor Linda for asking us to come on board and we thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Annie Chanick. I'm from St. Pius, the Penn Church. I just wanted to say this is truly a conservative effort with all the churches in our town, trying to make a difference so that children don't go without a lunch. Some of these children, it's not even their breakfast, they don't have breakfast, so they wind up having at least a lunch to fill, fill their bellies. Many of these parents have fallen on hard times and I think it's up to us as a community to help support this program and implement it and, and don't let any children go hungry. So I thank Pastor Linda for spearheading this program, so I think it's our fifth year also that we have been doing this program and it's very rewarding to the volunteers who help support this program also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that it's St. Pius, Fork River Presbyterian Church, Fork River Baptist Church, the Crossbridge Community Church, Village Lutheran Church, the Food Bank, and as well as Lacy UMC, that, and that's the only reason it's working is because the whole community has pulled together. And I'm just really proud of that. I think that's the greatest joy, that everyone is, is coming together. And so do you have any questions about that?
Pastor, I have a question. How many volunteers throughout the summer do all this? Ballpark?
How many volunteers throughout the summer? Thank you. I would say with, with each of the organizations, you have to have two drivers and a spy group.
Okay.
And then you have to have people that prep the food.
Right.
And then you have to have people to put the lunches together. So you're talking at least 20 to 30 volunteers from each organization on a weekly basis.
Okay, wow. Wow, that's great.
Keeps us hopping. But we're organized enough that we start at eight o'clock in the morning, by 10:30 we're delivering lunches. And then the coolers come back and we get set up for the next day.
So you go back out and pick up the coolers? Is that how that works?
Yeah, there's coolers that Pastor Linda brings to each of the churches. We pass them on.
Uh-huh.
And some supplies that she's able to get, like the bags and that kind of stuff. And that, those things she brings to each church as we do it. And then the church itself, if we want to add to the lunch, like in our case, Village is extremely generous. Our congregation is wonderful about donating juice boxes and snacks and fresh fruits and things like that to supplement whatever's being provided through the program itself. And now, like I said, with Vacation Bible School, we're trying to give the children an induction to Jesus as well.
Okay, can we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What we do in the morning is, different days of the week, different businesses within town donate certain items.
Okay.
That morning, we have to go out to those businesses, pick up those supplies and we bring them to the church that is doing the route that week. Because sometimes it's not at our church, it's at St. Pius or the, the Lutheran or wherever. If they don't have the facility to be able to provide the kitchen or the space to be able to put the lunches together, we open our doors downstairs and we let them use our facility.
So if somebody wanted to get involved and help you guys?
They can.
Call the Meth- call the Methodist Church?
Call the Methodist Church, yes. Absolutely. Or any of the churches that are involved in it, I'm sure they can help put it into work. We always find a spot for somebody.
We have Applebee's, Wawa.
Yes.
Jerry Butcher.
Jerry Butcher. Captain's Haptonson.
Walmart's.
Walmart.
Captain's Haptonson.
Manhattan Bagels.
Neat.
And the Pete's Freeze in town are also helping us out. We pick up pizzas the day before, we individually wrap them, and so they get a slice of pizza and they're all.
Oh, wow. I just love that.
Oh, they love it. We tried it last year and they loved it, so we're doing it again this year.
That's great. That's great.
I, I didn't know that there were so many churches involved, I have to tell you. You know, I knew the program had been in place, but I didn't realize it was growing as rapidly as it is, but, you know, I've got to tell you, you're doing a great job. It's such a wonderful thing for the community.
Thank you. We all, we also expect a rise in the number of children this year.
Keep growing up.
As a population within town.
We also, I just wanted to mention that we have children helping children. Although they don't know who is receiving the lunch, parents bringing their children and they're able to help put items on in the bag, you know, they're pre-wrapped. And so that, I think, is a beautiful way to teach that, as always to the community too.
Village always takes the last week because we like to roll them up with everything that's left over. And the most rewarding thing is to get to the house and get these thank you notes left in the cooler by the children. Thank you for the lunches that we provided.
Appreciate it.
And this, this goes on from what, July and August, or end of school on?
June 25th, right through the Friday that school opens. It's 10 weeks this year.
Right when the school year ends, that's when we pick up, we store it. Right when the school year ends to make sure that there's not one day that they're without a lunch.
Fantastic.
And then during Christmas break also.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes. We took, we took boxes of food out to the families that called us and said they needed them, so they had lunches for the week.
Pastor, before you sit down, I have a donation to make. I had an opportunity of meeting Gail a few weeks ago and she was very, very passionate about the program and I promised her I was going to make a donation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you. Local Order of Moose Memorial Motorcycle Run, May 6th, 2018.
The Loyal Order of the Moose Lodge on Route 9 in Lenoka Harbor is having a fundraiser for a gentleman who had passed away and he left behind four young children. It was an unexpected passing. And they're going to have, they're looking to have a motorcycle, I guess they call it a poker run. It will be, registration and departure will be at the local Elks Lodge on May 6th from 11, at 11 o'clock they will proceed to leave the lodge and then head out to Jackson. We're just looking for permission from the Township to hold it. And of course it's going to require some police traffic control, which I've spoken to Chief DeBella and he's on board with that. And there shouldn't be any problems with it that day, we just need permission granted to them.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have here. Do you want to go right into Township and then do executives?
What do we have to do?
What? We don't need it now.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah. If anybody would like to leave, they can leave, you don't have to stay.
We're going to go right into the Township meeting right now.
Let's adjourn this.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Move it, move it.
All in favor?
Aye. Ready? Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press, in the Lacy Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. It's like to have a salute to the flag in a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance 2018-11, amending Chapter 261 Parks.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 261 of Township Code of the Township of Lacy until Parks. Basically what this is, is this is just switching around our, combining the rate for the summer recreation program. Currently you would pay a recreation fee and then the day at the park you would pay for your t-shirts and then prior to the end of the season party you would pay for that. So instead of taking the three collections throughout the year and possibly some kids missing out on the end of the season party, we're just lumping it into the, as a registration fee, so it's $130 for the season, which it is $130 now, but just in three separate payments.
Move it.
Motion, yeah.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2018-12, amending Chapter 273 Property Maintenance.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 273 of the Township Code entitled Property Maintenance so as to amend Section 2, Abandoned and Vacant Properties. The Township of Lacy is making it mandatory for vacant and abandoned properties owned by mortgage companies and banks that, that are still abandoned or vacant. Registration requirements effective May 1st. Part of that registration requirement is a registration fee. The first year will be $750 and subsequent years at this point would be $1,000. The, the first year will be prorated since we are starting mid-year, but next January if you're a first time on the list, it will be 750 and then your second year would be 1,000. And this is for the maintenance of those abandoned properties until they're switched, until they're sold and turned over. Again, this is for those that are not, you know, for banks and mortgage companies.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-06, Vacating Various Streets.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 273 of the Township Code entitled Property Maintenance so as to amend Section 2, Abandoned and Vacant Properties. The Township of Lacy is making it mandatory for vacant and abandoned properties owned by mortgage companies and banks that, that are still abandoned or vacant. Registration requirements effective May 1st. Part of that registration requirement is a registration fee. The first year will be $750 and subsequent years at this point would be $1,000. The, the first year will be prorated since we are starting mid-year, but next January if you're a first time on the list, it will be 750 and then your second year would be 1,000. And this is for the maintenance of those abandoned properties until they're switched, until they're sold and turned over. Again, this is for those that are not, you know, for banks and mortgage companies.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-06, Vacating Various Streets.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, vacating all the right title and interest of the Township of Lacy in Paper Street, portions of Stafford Avenue, Plumstead Avenue, Lakers Avenue, Heatherington Court, Chatsworth Avenue, Evan Street, Berkeley Avenue and unnamed right-of-way 25 feet wide north of Block 1634.10, Lot 23 and an unnamed right-of-way 25 feet wide westerly of Block 1634.10, Lot 23.
Move it. Second reading. Second reading and open it up to the floor.
Seeing none, make motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Abstain.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading, 2018-07, Authorizing the Exchange of Certain Properties.
In order to the Township of Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the exchange of certain lands with Lacy Warren Associates in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-6. In, this is a companion ordinance to the prior ordinance with regards to the street vacation. We are vacating those streets and in, in exchange for that, we are receiving Block 1853, Lots 9, 10, 11, 12 and 13 and Block 1900, Lot 4.
Please, second reading, open it up to the floor.
Seeing none, make motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2018-08, Authorizing Execution of an Agreement with the County of Ocean for its Communications Tower.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing an easement to JCP and Allen, Block 1837, Lots 3, and 4.01, in accordance with NJSA 48:12-14. This is along Richard Kennedy Boulevard in the back here by Gilly Park. The county is installing a new communications tower, and in order to run the electricity, we need to acquire an easement. Second reading?
Second reading, open it up to the public.
Seeing none, make motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2018-10, Authorizing the Convenience of a Portion of Block 1837, Lot 4.01, to the LMUA.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the commandance of a portion of Block 1837, Lot 4.01, to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B1. This is the site where the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority is building their new administration building. Also, in addition to that, they will be providing water and sewer laterals to Block 1837, Lot 3.
Move it.
Second reading, open it up to the floor.
Seeing none, make motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-118, Entering Into an Agreement with Stafford Township For a Conflict Tax Assessor.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local services agreement with the Township of Stafford for as-needed conflict tax assessor for tax appeals. Our current tax assessor was, previously had served on the Ocean County Board of Taxation as a commissioner, and those taxpayers that might have filed appeals between the years 15 to 17, that he may have heard before him as a commissioner, he would have a conflict and hearing again, so we need to appoint a conflict assessor in any of those duplicate matters.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-119, Authorizing the Employment of Summer Recreation Staff.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department. These are our summer kids for the parks programs, the beach programs, the high school programs for the children, our bus drivers, and our event staff, and as we call them, the senior staff. And we have a new program this year. It's a volunteer program called Leaders in Training, and this will hopefully get us some very good future employees for our summer parks program.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Juliana?
Resolution 2018-120, Releasing the Maintenance Bond for Block 1,002, Lot 1.17.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement maintenance guarantee for Liberty Overhead Door Company Incorporated for Block 1,002, Lot 1.17. This has been maintained for the past two years on a maintenance bond, and has been authorized to be released.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-121, Releasing the Maintenance Bond for Road Opening Permit 4448.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement maintenance bond posted by Crown Group LLC for road improvement permit number 4448, which is on Hoyt Street. And again, this has withheld its two-year maintenance period.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-122, Releasing the Maintenance Bond for the Police Department Window Replacement Project.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for Window Co. Incorporated for the window replacement project for the Lacey Township Police Department. Again, this has withheld its two-year maintenance period, and is authorized to be released.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-123, Authorizing the Release of Road Opening Permit 4741, 4742, and 4743.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond posted by Bruce Connell for road opening permits number 4741, 4742, and 4743. And this is for 1612 Woodland Drive, 1600 Woodland Drive, and the sewer service was for 1600, 1610, and 1612 Woodland Drive.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-124, Canceling Taxes Due to a 100% Disabled Veteran Exemption.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collectors to cancel 2018 taxes due on a property granted the 100% disabled veterans exemption, and refund the resulting credit balance. And this is for Block 760, Lot 11.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-125, Authorizing the Employment of Snow Season Labor.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of snow season labors for the Department of Public Works. This is just for one that we added to the list for the last snowstorm, so I have to get the paperwork in the correct spot.
You're not anticipating any more snow.
I'm not anticipating any more snow, no. But I just have to put the proper paperwork in place so we can pay the individual.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-126, Authorizing the Refund of Deposits.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2018-127, Authorizing the Payment of Township Bills.
Resolution to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $5,378,553.97.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, but I'll stay on 4498, 4499, 0400.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with note of extension 0974, 0035, and 0400.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn? I was like, what are you gonna stand on? Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Monthly reports.
Okay. For the month of March, the municipal court collected receipts the amount of $23,215.31. For the month of March, the Department of Community Development collected receipts the amount of $93,067.80. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of March collected receipts the amount of $6,543.63. Road Department permits collected for the month of March was $8,100, recycling commodity in the amount of $710, and the truck parking areas in the amount of $3,000. February for the municipal court collected receipts the amount of $24,374.67. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it, second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of March 22, 2018.
Move it, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of March 22, 2018.
Move it, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Fork River Fire Company for Tyler Granato, Matthew Gilhall, and Matthew Devaney.
And I'd like to say that those three gentlemen are in the audience this evening.
Great.
Move it, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Congratulations, Ben.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. I'd just like to say something. That's, I talked about volunteerism, and this is part of it, growing to where we need to be, and I thank you, gentlemen, for stepping up, I really do, and doing what you have to do. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Motion to approve, what have we got? Motion to approve raffle license application for the St. Pius Church.
Move it, second.
All in favor? Aye.
I have no add-ons. None, take care of that.
Great. Comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, come on up here. I'm gonna cede my time to, to Jim by asking him some questions here. I want him to talk about the summer programs that are gonna happen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
And what else? Oh, let's talk about volunteer night.
Sure. Well, we had a volunteer night on Wednesday, April 4. It was during the school break, so we did have some, some people out of town. But we did sign in 100, I think, 119 people that signed in that evening. So the attendance was good. We had 24, I believe, nonprofit groups in attendance looking for volunteers. So hopefully, they found some good pairs, and they were able to, you know, sign up some new volunteers, and also kind of introduce themselves to the community, because a lot of the times, people don't know that these nonprofits are operating, existing, or even in need of volunteerism. So it's a great start. We want to build on that as we move forward, and continue that event year to year, making it an annual event.
Let's talk about the summer camp program. When does it start? I know we staggered, we started the cost at $130. That's all in, that's everything.
Yeah, so when people register now, the cost, instead of giving us a check for 100, and then a check for 20, and then a check for 7, we've just kind of bundled it all together to come up with one fee. And that way, you know, we're able to eliminate having people bring cash to the park that day, and you know, we get a windy day, and there's singles going down the field, and a kid forgets his pizza money, and then he's out on the pizza party, and then, you know, not that we would ever let that happen, but you know, then our staff are dipping into their pockets to make sure that kid's fed. So this kind of brings it all together, and parents are now able to write one check, and we'll be able to facilitate all that at one time, so. But we're really lucky in recreation. I mean, we have a fantastic team. Some of our team members are here tonight. But, you know, and the support we get from the community is outstanding, and it starts here in this room, from our mayor, our deputy mayor, our committeemen. Everyone is on board with making sure that we can say that Lacey Township has the best recreation department in, you know, Southern Ocean County, if not the entire state. You know, of course, I'm not gonna say that, but.
Of course you are.
So, you know, we're really lucky. And, you know, we started working on summer camp because it's our, it's our signature program that we run. We started September. As soon as it ended, we kind of took a look at it, and we said, you know, how can we make this program better? We want to enhance this program as best we can. And we wanted to go to the parents and the kids who participate in the program, and make sure they had input. And I'm gonna call up Kayla Peters. She's our camp director this year, and she's gonna talk about some of the enhancements that we are gonna be putting forth. Just a couple, because when I get excited about something, I could talk for hours, so I know there's lots of things going on. So I'm gonna call Ms. Peters up. She's gonna talk about a couple of items that we're changing, and I think are gonna be really impactful in the summer camp program, and then I'll, I'll step back and answer any other questions we have.
Hi, everyone. So first program, as you mentioned before, is a leader and training program. This is something that we're offering to our 14 and 15-year-olds. They're kids who have aged out of the program as early as 13, when they're too young to apply to counselors. So they'll be coming in two days a week, and really work from the whole day, and assisting with a lot of the daily camp operations. I've assigned some of our returning staff who really exemplify great qualities, great leadership qualities, as mentors for the kids, and they'll be their point person at the park, so they'll be the ones assigning daily tasks, showing them ropes a little bit, kind of showing them what the day looks like. So the kids will be coming in all day, work like as a regular camp counselor, will have some trips that they're gonna be able to attend on and participate on. They went through an entire process of a camp counselor. They came in for a very informal interview with me, and some of the mentors that we have, just to really get to know them, get to know the process, and then do an application, you know, a lot of recommendation resume that I helped, I gave them a guideline for. But that's something I'm really excited about, and it gives back to the community, because it allows them the chance to come in and really learn the ropes, and you know, this is a job that they're really interested in, and that also helps us out, because it gives us extra hours at the camp, and it really gets us, you know, great trainees for employees, future employees.
No, I think it's a great idea. Tell us about summer camp. We did something in the summer camp this year, right?
Yes, so we're adding on a couple extra days during the survey. Jim mentioned, we found that a lot of our parents are looking for more childcare, so I added on a couple extra days to Fridays, Friday days. So what we're doing is extended day trips to a few new facilities. We're going to Branchford Sports Complex, Liberty Science Center, and Sahara Sands Waterpark. We're also going to I Play America. That's a new trip, but it's the most popular, most attended trip, so we're gonna move that to the Friday trip as well. And this is an event for the older kids, seven to 13, because we still think the five and six-year-olds are too young, and those are trips that, you know, you need to be a little bit older. But it's really gonna be good, because we'll be bringing in, give the kids extra time, and the counselors extra time, and it's gonna be.
Now, the Friday trips are extra outside the 130, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, they're based on individual costs, whatever.
Yep, individual costs, and they'll all include lunch as well, so the kids don't really need to bring anything. Parents can just kind of send their kids on their way, and it's, and a little bit of extended day as well. So generally, camp runs from 9:00 to 3:00. This will be from 9:00 to 4:30, 5:00, depending upon traffic. Hopefully, we will not hit.
And those kids will be dropped off at the park that they were picked up at, too?
Yeah, actually, we're gonna be doing charter buses this year, because of, I'm just a little worried with traffic, so we're gonna have air conditioning, a bathroom on board, so they don't have to stop. Bathroom's the biggest thing. And just so that the kids are more comfortable, so we'll actually, just to avoid any transportation issues, reduce Gilly Park, just as it's a quick, in and out, direct close to the parkway. And it's something that, you know, make sure all the parents are aware of, that that's where drop-off is.
When can they start signing up for summer camp?
Uh, right now, hopefully, May 1st.
May 1st, okay. Jim, let's talk about how we structure the payments. There's a cutoff date, and so, right?
Well, registration for camp starts May 1st, and the ordinance that we have proposed this evening puts us at a fee of $130 up until the first day of camp. At the first day of camp and beyond, there is a secondary fee, which is an extra $50, it brings it to 180. And we really do this because we have to plan our staffing, our supply lists. It's hard to source product after camp has started and get it there in a timely manner. So we want to make sure that the kids have the resources that they need, so it's an incentive and encouragement for parents to register early. So, and it, it started last year, and it was very effective. We had, I can't quote the number offhand, but it was a handful, maybe 10, 15 people that registered late, whereas in years past, it would be, the program would double after the program started. So it was really good to get people in early, and that way, we were able to plan accordingly, so that's important. We're also, you know, with the, with the trips that we've added on, it is an additional cost, but it's gonna extend childcare for that sought-after fifth day that many of the parents need. Camp traditionally runs Monday through Thursday. We do that because we utilize the Board of Ed as a rain day location, so we have a facility that's safe, because we are outdoors in the event of a thunderstorm. And we were always afraid to take that chance of scheduling a Friday without having an indoor facility. So we were, we've been Monday through Thursday for the past five to six, seven years, before I even started, so.
Yeah, 2010, we started that.
Having this option on Fridays is fantastic, because now a parent, you know, the trips range from $40 to $60, but it includes charter bus transportation, which means there's no stops on the parkway with 100 kids going into the rest area to use the bathroom. So we have a charter bus, we have, it's air-conditioned, temperature-controlled bathrooms. It's gonna include lunch, so, you know, the kids are gonna get more time at these facilities, because we don't have to be back by the end of our camp day at 3, where pickup is, so they're gonna be able to come. We're gonna get more time at the facilities, and it'll extend, it'll extend the work, you know, the week for many parents who need that coverage, who have it Monday through Thursday, and then either make the decision to, you know, have a babysitter on that Friday, which costs significantly more than the 40 or 50 hours that they're gonna spend on some of the trips. So it's something we're happy about, because I think many of the parents are gonna be very, you know, comfortable with registering for those trips. They are an additional cost, so, you know, it's, it pays for that service of having it, so we're trying to be as physically responsible as well.
How many kids do we service in camp?
That camp is close to 600 kids, you know, so.
Has that number been steady through the years, or has it increased?
No, we've, we've, starting, my first year here, Ryan was our camp, heavily involved in our camp program, and under his leadership, he brought the program from 212 students to 575, where we were last year, very close to. So we, we've been hitting steady growth of 20 to 30 percent of the year. I think in one year, we had a 10% growth, and that was, that was, you know, a very, very small number, so. But it's been, it's been a fantastic program, well-received by the community. It's, you know, it's our signature program that we, that we offer. It's, I went to it as a kid. I'm clearly not a kid anymore. So for it to be, you know, for it to be going on, it's 30-plus year, and I'll let everybody do the math on my age. You know, it's a testament to the dedication of the community, the township, and the Recreation Department.
That's all I have. Does anybody else got any questions for Jim?
When's our summer adult program stuff coming out?
It's, all my stuff is going to print shortly. May 1st will be our registration stuff, but we have some.
May 1st it'll start?
May 1st they'll start?
Yeah, we have quite a few fun things planned, so stay tuned.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting, 'cause I wanna sign up for one of them.
The fireworks, what, July 3rd this year?
July 3rd.
And we have a surprise, right? We have Tequila Rose playing beforehand?
Tequila Rose Band, which is one of our bands that played in our summer concert series last year. They are scheduled to be our musical performance for that day.
7:30 or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll kick off at 7:30, and right till we shoot our fireworks.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it.
Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Committee man Quinn?
Let me just start by saying, Jim, Kayla, you know, Ryan, the patience you have with Tim. You know, I gotta tell you, you guys are doing a fantastic job, and Tim as well. I mean, because I know it's a unit, you know, Jimmy and Tim, you spend a tremendous amount of time together, you know, getting these things set up. And Timmy's always, you know, telling us, "I got a new idea, I got a new idea," you know.
Yeah, Jim knows how that sounds.
And they all ultimately come to fruition and become very, very successful for this community. And that's, you're 100% right. The people in this community look forward to these programs. That summer program is magnificent, you know, for $130 to be able to get your children to a camp for the summer is just, you know, unheard of in today's day and age, seven weeks at that price. So, you do a fantastic job, and we're certainly looking forward to a great summer again. Kayla, we wish you the very best. It's, you know, you have big shoes to fill, because Ryan brought it to 600, so, you know, we're gonna protect those others, keep growing ourselves. But, you know, I just wanna congratulate you on the job you've done. And Tim, thank you, because, you know, you're really doing a outstanding job.
No, it's all that, trust me. They yes me to death, and then I walk out, and they go, "There's no way we're doing that."
But the other thing I wanna just touch on with recreation is the award, you know, that you received, you know, that the park received. You know, thanks to you folks, you know, special thanks to Tim. I have to extend very, very special thanks, like Tim said, Casey Parker. It was Casey's last, you know, real opportunity to take and put something in place, you know, to finalize his legacy. And I know during the timeframe, that the, not only the park was being built, but the planning of the park, the planning of the financing, people, you know, we've mentioned before, but I just want people to realize that park was built with grant money, that the township did not have to take and, you know, spend our own money. We got that money from a grant, and we were able to put it to such great use. And we were able to get as much out of it as we got, basically, you know, because of Casey and Veronica, you know, kinda dickering back and forth with the expenses. So, I mean, you did a great job, and I can't say enough. It is a wonderful park. Like Jimmy said, if you haven't been down there, and you have an opportunity to go see it, the weather's starting to warm up, you know, the sun will be out, the park will be filled again with kids. So, and I know you're talking about having another concert down there this year.
No, no, not down there.
Oh, not down there, okay.
We're moving the concerts around town.
Okay, okay.
We're actually gonna have a concert, I think, we're working on getting a concert out in Bama, correct?
Well, yeah, we're working on that, absolutely.
I get yes to that, see? I get yes to that.
So, but thank you, everyone, for the recreation. Two other things I just wanna touch on. The ordinance we adopted on our first reading tonight, with regards to vacant property ordinance, Veronica pretty much explained what it's all about. And the reason we're doing this is because we, as a community, have probably 1,200 to 1,500 vacant homes in this town, that the banks are basically just neglecting. The banks are taking the position, well, they're not gonna dump them all on the market in one year, because of their balance sheet, and they don't wanna screw up their own, you know, financial situation, you know, when it comes to their regulators, you know, which we don't really care about. That's not our issue. Our issue is that we wanna get these properties back on the situation where there's people living in them, the homes being taken care of. They're, for the most part, you know, property maintenance issues over and over again on a regular basis. So, this is a step to be able to start forcing the banks into trying to move forward. Like Veronica said, right now, we're looking at $750, $1,000 in a second year, but that could very well change. There's a good possibility that those numbers are gonna go up after the second year. So, we're gonna wait and see what kinda success we have with these banks and mortgage companies starting to move forward. But it's something that we're not gonna put up with. If we have the ability to earn money for the taxpayers in this town, at the bank's expense, we're gonna do everything we have to do to try and bring as much money as we can and force their hand. The other issue is with regards to property maintenance, because it's not only the property maintenance on these homes that we're dealing with around town. The committee is gonna have a major push starting this spring with property maintenance throughout the entire community, because there's so many, probably the majority of the complaints we get every, every year, well, for the last couple of years in code enforcement, all have to do with property maintenance, whether it's abandoned cars, whether it's abandoned boats, whether it's trailers, people not cutting their grass, garbage on people's property. We've made a commitment, and we're gonna take and go out full force and really start going after resolving these problems. You know, the summonses will be issued, and people are gonna have to start taking and doing what they have to do to bring their homes into compliance, so that the guy that has a beautiful home and has a real messy home next door is not devaluing the value of his home. We hear from people over and over again on this, and we've gotten to the point where we're gonna take and make this a very top, top priority for the committee moving forward. So, within the next, you know, month or two, we're gonna have a lot of new code changes in our codes, that are gonna give our code enforcement officer the ability to take and really issue summonses if people don't come into compliance. We're not going around town trying to make it difficult for people. If there's financial hardships and stuff like that, we'll deal with it. But we, over and over again, get too many people, especially a lot of investors, that buy properties in town, that just let the properties go into disarray, and then the adjoining properties on the same street, you know, have to suffer because of that. And we're not gonna allow that to happen anymore. So, like I said, you'll see new ordinances and code changes coming up in the next two months. And, you know, if your property's in disarray, you know, please start working on it. Warm weather's here, things are gonna start getting better. If you've got cars that are in disrepair and that should be in the junkyard, call the guy, get him to the junkyard. If you've got boats that are in disarray, anything that's out on the properties that shouldn't be there, you know, try and clean it up and, you know, have some compassion for your neighbors. So, thank you, Mayor.
Committee man Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was gonna talk about property maintenance, but Gary touched on it so well. I agree 100%. Property maintenance is an issue that we've all been dealing with for a number of years now, and it really has to be addressed. Some of the codes are very outdated, so that it really is gonna be a big push going forward. It's something we're gonna look to change. I don't think we had a meeting the last, or the cameras weren't here? I can't remember. I can't remember. Well, Lacy, the annual tax collectors report, did we talk about this last time?
Nope.
No, we didn't. So, that, the annual tax collectors report was issued on March 1st. It's for 2017. I always find it's a very interesting read. Two of the questions that I tend to get a lot are the, our tax collection rate, which is 99%, I think, this year, a little bit higher than that, 99.4%. And it's around that rate every year. People always ask us what our collection rate is, and if we're getting all the money in property taxes that we should be getting, and the answer is, yes, we are. And also, this is the second year in a row that we have not had to defer the school taxes, so that helps the schools out. Just a couple of business items. We are still, just an update on our town center. We are patiently waiting for the governor to appoint members to the state planning commission, so we can continue our application for our plan endorsement. And we've held a couple meetings with the New Jersey Natural Gas Company to see if there was any opportunities we can pursue with them in order to help either partner up with them to increase revenue in the township, or to save money on different items. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee man Curtito?
Yes, I would like to echo some of the same sentiments were said here tonight. I think Committee man Quinn said it very well. I think the property maintenance issues are very important. I think that when you come down to it, regardless of income, I think pride is a prayer. And I do think that there is a lot of pride in this town. There's a lot of pride in this town, because you can see it at each and every one of the volunteer events, where they come together, one of our civic groups, like the Elks or the Moose, whether it's rallying for a child with cancer, or something having to do with emergency services. So, I wanna see that pride translated over to homeowners. There's some very basic things that can be done, and I support my colleagues on this board here tonight, this evening, moving forward with that ordinance. I think it's something that's necessary. It preserves the quality of life in our town, and it preserves property values around our town. That said, I'd like to report that I was at a Central Jersey Prevention Coalition for Alcohol and Drugs yesterday. One of the speakers there that did a really good job, and I gave him a lot of credit at the time, was Lieutenant Paul Sullivan from Lacy Township Police Department. He spoke well, he spoke eloquently. He talked about the social hosting ordinance that this board passed back in 2012. It's very poignant right now at this time, as it's prom time. You know, unfortunately, we look at the Cover De Asbury Park press sometimes around this time of year. We see a twisted metal coffin that used to be ours prior, a nice Cadillac or Lincoln picking up a young couple, taking them to the prom. We don't wanna see any of that. We're out and about in schools. I know that our police department is very above board in their efforts in our schools, and doing some prevention work and educating our youth. I will be also preventing, presenting Project Drive, Driving Responsible Youth at Lacy Township High School on the 10th of May, right prior to their prom, in Cover De Asbury County. I believe the chief and Lieutenant Sullivan as well, as part and parcel of what I do full-time for the county. So, I wanna thank him. And the social hosting ordinance, you know, the state statute didn't cover private property, and that was the value of the private property ordinance. We were one of the first municipalities to pass it, and I personally believe that it saved a lot of young people's lives, and it's made the roads in Lacy Township a lot safer. I'd like to mention the volunteer fair. I did attend that fair, and of course, our mayor was there. I wanna thank our mayor and our deputy mayor for the good job they did in putting that together. Was able to talk with Chief Zafranski of Lenoka Harbor Fire. Of course, I saw everybody that's here tonight from our recreation department, the old guard, you name it, EMS, other civic groups, Rolling Thunder. I think everybody was introduced to a wide array of volunteers, and I know it's gonna be better next year. And I wanna thank everybody that's here. I wanna make sure that I name them, our recreation department, our deputy mayor, our mayor, and everybody that had a hand in that. It was just so well attended, and it was well-attended, and it was well-done.
Good job, and God bless you.
I wanna thank our business community. We saw our, really, every house of worship we had represented here in Lacy Township tonight. You know, they're first to the fight, to stand up and stand to the plate, and they really hit a home run for us each and every time that we asked, whether it's Lacy Fest, formerly Lacy Day, or what have you, whatever the case or the occasion may be. It's a lot of familiar players, and it's a lot of new players, so I'm really proud of our business community for stepping up to that as well. That, looking forward to Little League. I'll close with Little League tomorrow. I'm sure the mayor will mention that. And also, they're gonna have Alex's Lemonade Stand there as well, one of the premier, really, the outreach they do for young kids with cancer is very above board. If you have an opportunity, it's a huge event down at Plume Park, 11:30, 12 o'clock. The mayor will throw out the first pitch. I wanna steal the mayor's thunder. I'm sure he'll speak of it. Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of things going on. Here we go. I'm not gonna try to take too much of the time, but I want you to be informed of a lot of things. First of all, as Committee man Curtito mentioned, Lacy Little League opening day this Saturday. I think opening, first pitch is at 11:30. I hope everybody shows up to support all of them. George Resatar, which is the president of Little League, has done a great job. He called me today to commend on that part, and I'm gonna bring it up into that, because he commended the public works, the job they did down there, went over and above. They did three to four weeks of work in three days, sending the crew down there. I wanna commend Dan Miguel and Public Works for getting them parks to where they need to be, and being shorthanded six?
Seven.
Seven people.
And in addition to that, the last snowstorm damaged all the batting cages, so we lost them in the last snowstorm.
Right, batting cages.
We're very fortunate that the insurance company is going to cover that through insurance, so it's, we're just a matter of ordering those cages, having them come in, and then we'll be reimbursed from the insurance company.
Wow. So, he's done a lot of work down there, and on top of, you know, also, on that note, I would like to say, to thank him for getting the parks, he's getting them all ready. That's the time of the year we're in now. An excellent job this winter on the storms. I hope we're done with them. I think we are. I don't think we're gonna see no more snow, I hope. This winter, I said on all of them, like I said, like Veronica said, being short seven men through that, too, that was kinda rough on the public works back there, but everybody chipped in and came together to get the job done. Excellent job for all of them. And it falls big on the shoulders of the new super back there, you know. Dan Miguel, he did a great job with Public Works and everybody that was involved. Jim Wyland, good job on that volunteer day. You and Ryan and the staff, that's what I like to see. It brings out people. I've never been to a, anything that I've been to so far, that I've been asked so many questions and given so many accolades of what you did. To bring people like that for volunteers, and that's what we need, and that's what people understand. And I'm still going through some of the messages and meeting with people from there. I have two of them tomorrow. Fork River Mountain Coalition Cleanup, Sunday, April 27. If you'd like to know more information about the coalition or to volunteer, contact the coalition at www.frmc.org. Ocean County Department of Solid Waste Management has announced their shredding and household hazardous waste schedules. Residents can view both schedules from the townships or the Ocean County website at www.lacetownship.org or www.co.ocean.nj.us. Man, that's a big, that's a lot of reading there. But the shredding, so you know, I did get that. Here, it's gonna be at the Lacy Township Recycling Center Lot on Municipal Lane, Saturday, August 18, that will be doing the shredding. Something that Dan Miguel and Row back there in Public Works asked me to speak about, recycling. Recycling only works when we recycle right. As a reminder, only the following items are accepted in single-stream recycling at Curbside and in the recycling center. Plastic bottles, necks smaller than base, glass bottles and jars, metal cans, aluminum and tin, corrugated cardboard, office paper, junk mail, newspapers, magazines, catalogs. Please remove all caps, lids, and pumps. Empty all liquids and food. Rinse containers out. No shredded paper, plastic bags, yogurt, or food containers. Syrofoam, phone books, recycle separately, bring them into the recycling center, the phone books. Chipboard, tissue, or food boxes, beverage packaging, paper towels, or toilet paper tubes. Nothing tied or bundled. So, he said thank you very much to follow that. Also, Lacy Girls Softball, it will be, opening day will be Saturday, April 21. The ceremonies will start at 10:30. The parade is starting at 10:30 a.m., so we'll all be there to throw out the first pitch for that. I think that's it. Well, and I started a little bit of contacting different organizations, as I said, to bring different businesses in town. And we thought, I had a lady in Pheasant Run contact Cracker Barrel, and I really thought, when you contact a big company like that, like they'd never get in touch with you. Well, I got a letter sent back to me from them, and I'd like to read it to you. "Thank you for contacting us here at Cracker Barrel Old Country Store. We appreciate you sharing our suggestion for a store location in Ocean County, Lacy Township. Although we don't have immediate plans to build in your neck of the woods..." Now, that's really coming down and saying, "They are from Tennessee."
Yes, sir.
"I have forwarded your comments to our real estate department for review and consideration. We look forward to hearing from you again." So, big companies do, when you contact them, they will, most of them will get back to you and see if there is something that they're interested in in Lacy Township. There's a lot of opportunity, and we're trying to come up with ideas for different things. I've had a lot from asking the last time, people have contacted me to give me some ideas, different. I'm grateful, I love small business, but you can only have so many pizzerias, you know, Chinese. You need to bring something else. That, also, these businesses in town should realize, bring something else that will bring people to this town. That's the idea of it. People think that it's just you're promoting small business. You are, but bring a different type of business into this town that will bring people from other towns to come here to shop these other shops that we have in town. So, that's the idea. That's about all I have for tonight. There again, I'd like to thank all the volunteers throughout Lacy Township. I always do that, because without them, we are, we are nothing. What they do for us is totally, it touches my heart every time I see them. As we had these gentlemen joining the fire department tonight, that's what we need, is volunteers. And if I'm not mistaken, they might have came from, two of them, I think one of them wanted to join that came, that I noticed was down at that volunteer day. So, things like this happen. That's about all. But before I leave, Veronica, refresh me a little bit on this that I told...
Oh, the Rotary Club this coming weekend has their annual, it's called Casino Night, but it's a poker tournament for anybody that's interested in cards and playing poker. It's at the Captain's Inn. Six o'clock, I believe, is the start of the event. There's also Blackjack Tournament as well. Tickets are $100 per player. Visa gift cards are the winning, are the prizes that you win. So, if you know of anybody that would like to play poker, you can contact either myself, or you can contact Dr. Thomas McGillic at Wharf Side Chiropractic Center. There are still room available for extra players. So, it is a fun night, and it, of course, Rotary is always a good cause, and the proceeds do help all of the fundraising events that we contribute to throughout the year.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's all for charity, and that's what the Rotary does. They do great things. Other than that, that's all I have. I'd like to open the floor to public comment.
Bill Boss, St. Drive, Fork River Beach.
Before you continue... Before you continue, I love that blue coat.
Thank you. It's really old. I was talking with a couple of people yesterday at a luncheon with the American Legion and they were talking about how Mayor Giuliano was asked if he could move the PA box, the community hall, to a different location because it was in a rather odd place for people to get hurt easily for it. And that was really recently. And right now, you go to the community hall and it's moved from the south wall to the west wall. It's already been moved that quick. And I called our director, Mike Solo, and Mike asked me if I would come in and at least say to Mayor Giuliano, thank you on behalf of the old guard and the American Legion for being so quick on getting that done for us. They just want you to know that they did recognize it right away.
I implemented it, but the Department of Public Works went right down there, Dan Miguel and his crew.
They asked and you reached out and you reached out, so it's fine. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
That's my job. Thank you.
Jim Schmiedling, Sunrise Boulevard, Fork River. On Sunrise Boulevard, somebody cut a tree down about two weeks ago, piled all the branches in Sunrise Boulevard and left them there.
We're getting there, slowly but surely.
I appreciate, I didn't know if anybody, let anybody know.
We have 192 miles of roadway and unfortunately, you know, all of the roads were impacted by that last snowstorm and at the same time, leaf pickup started. So we're trying to prioritize and get around with the trucks as we go through, but I will make sure that Sunrise Boulevard is one of the ones still on the list and that it wasn't just missed.
This wasn't just what came down from the storm. They cut a tree down, literally. You can see the stump right where they piled.
So it had nothing to do with the storm then?
I don't know. But you can see where they cut the tree down.
Some of them, yeah, some of them had to cut the tree down after that storm, so.
It's a big mess and somebody's going to run into it one of these nights.
Yeah, if it's stuff that's manageable that can go through our chipper, we will pick it up, but if it's not, it's going to be, the items that big can go through our chipper and much bigger than that, they're going to have to dispose of it.
There are some logs.
Yeah, they're going to have to dispose of those big logs because we don't have a way of disposing of them either.
But I've been waiting for somebody on a foggy night to run right into that pile.
I will make sure Public Works goes and takes a look at it.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Veronica?
Yes?
When my wife and I drove by to you to the mall this evening, that big tree on the side, there's a wrench hanging down off that, that big round hanging down.
Yeah, okay.
That would go into the window and it's gone.
I'm afraid that we're going to lose that tree one of these days.
There's a big wrench hanging down, I believe, a couple of them.
All right, I will have them take a look at that.
Anybody else? Jim, you don't want to say nothing else?
Yeah.
Seeing none, motion to close the floor. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Motion to adjourn.